Ninth meeting of the Raleigh Planning Commission. Welcome to those present here today and to those joining us online. My name is Nicole Bennett. I'm Chair of the Planning Commission. Commissioners Miller and Shelburne are absent unexcused. We begin each meeting with an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Is anyone here this morning who'd like to comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda, which includes approval of the August 26th meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes? Could I get a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Fox has moved to approve the minutes. So I have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Neptune has seconded it. All in favor? All opposed? Great, that's unanimous. We have one committee report coming out of our text change committee. I'll turn it over to the Chair of that committee, Commissioner Otwell.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. When we met in August, the text change committee saw, we listened to a presentation on TC 325, its Greenway amendments, which clarifies some issues surrounding widths and standards and requirements for development, and it's mostly about development regulations, what the developer is required to provide, and the guidance is given, and provide some incentives for extra Greenway connections at the time of development. And we heard a presentation, and we had discussion, and voted unanimously to recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all have about the ordinance or anything that we discussed during the meeting, and after that, I'll be happy to make a motion to recommend approval with the full commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Otwell. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this ordinance? If not, then Commissioner Otwell.
All right. I moved to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated September 9th, 2025, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment.
Commissioner Otwell has moved to approval. Commissioner Fox has seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Next, we'll move on to old business. We have one item under old business, that's Z 1125, 2230 South New Hope Road. We received a full presentation from staff and the applicant at our August 26th meeting. We deferred the case to allow the applicant to consider conditions related to stormwater, and I believe Commissioner Cochrane wanted some further information about a nearby pump station. I'll ask staff to provide an update focused on changes since we last heard this case.
Good morning. Again, this is Z 1125, 2230 South New Hope Road. Again, the request is to rezone 22.98 acres from CX 5 CU to CX 5 CU. Just for clarity's sake, I'll go over again, this was part of a rezoning in 2019 that incorporated two properties. Only one of the parcels this time is up for the rezoning, that's why only one of the parcels is having the conditions requested to be changed. Since the last meeting, new conditions were supplied, new number six, that would restrict the floodplain area encroachment impact to 40%, which are what the current conditions on that property are, and this was crafted with the assistance of stormwater. And I apologize about the big branch pump station. I did not remember to get further information on that. I do remember my original conversations with them where driveway would have to be secured so they have permanent access with enough to handle a truck going down through there, but as far as the remainder of information on that, I apologize, I didn't get anything back.
Okay, thank you. We did receive public comment at our previous meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, with that objection, I'll give five minutes to each side.
Great. Good morning. Michael Birch, Longleaf Law Partners, here on behalf of the applicant, and just wanted to maybe address the questions you had with regard to the pump station. So there is an existing easement providing access to the pump station, surrounding the pump station, all in favor of the city of Raleigh. It was upsized as part of the Old Town development, and there's more than sufficient capacity to serve this development, as well as other, you know, future development in the area. I don't know if those were the nature of your questions, or if you had any other...
Yes, we'll just bring it back to the table to Commissioner Cochrane.
So my question was in regards to odors. The other lift station nearby, they noted sulfur smells, and I was curious to see if there was a similar issue here.
We're not aware of any. Now, there isn't any development on this side, right, the west side of New Hope, where the pump station is located. That is not something we heard at our neighborhood meetings, and we had attendees both from the neighborhood to the west, the neighborhood to the north, and I believe we had, at our first neighborhood meeting, an attendee from Old Town, and that was not, that issue was not raised here.
Is the city staff aware of any issues?
Nothing was addressed in the comments received, and nothing was addressed in the original notes from staff.
Can I add to that, to answer her question, since I do live near this? There is a smell. There is a smell.
Okay, thank you. Just checking, is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, so we'll keep it at the table now. Are there any additional questions or comments related to the additional condition that has been added? Commissioner Omakay?
My comment is to the, not necessarily just to this condition, I do also want to reiterate, I live up the street from this...
Can you talk in your microphone, please?
I live up the street from this development. There has been inadequate community engagement. I even, after the last meeting, drove around New Hope and up Rock Quarry to see if there were any signs. There was one sign that is set back into the property on the New Hope side, where nobody can see it. Nobody can stop and know that this is happening. I measured my home to the edge of this property. I am within a thousand feet. I was not notified. Other residents were not notified. The CAC was not brought into this conversation. What the pictures on this presentation don't show is the kitty corner street from this development that is swampland. So I want to reiterate the concern I brought up last time of multiple developments being done in one area. We approved in that meeting affordable housing up Rock Quarry about a mile from this development. The meeting before that, we approved on New Hope less than a mile from this development. The Barwell Road, which she's referring to about a smell, and everybody's saying they don't see one, as a person who is directly impacted or would be by this project, there is a odor that is in this area. Multiple developments being done in this area will increase the likelihood of flooding, even if this one developer does make their, you know, make their conditions to make this not happen. Us developing a lot, approving a lot of development in a short area that's less than a two-mile radius from each other, that is highly being overdeveloped up Rock Quarry Road, will cause an issue. This area is in a flood zone. There is a better place where there could have been signage put on the corner of New Hope and Rock Quarry where Joan's sausage meets.
Ninth meeting of the Raleigh Planning Commission. Welcome to those present here today and to those joining us online. My name is Nicole Bennett. I'm Chair of the Planning Commission. Commissioners Miller and Shelburne are absent unexcused. We begin each meeting with an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Is anyone here this morning who'd like to comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda, which includes approval of the August 26th meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes? Could I get a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Fox has moved to approve the minutes, so I have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Neptune has seconded it. All in favor? All opposed? Great, that's unanimous. We have one committee report coming out of our text change committee. I'll turn it over to the Chair of that committee, Commissioner Otwell.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. When we met in August, the text change committee saw, we listened to a presentation on TC 325, it's Greenway Amendments, which clarifies some issues surrounding widths and standards and requirements for development, and it's mostly about development regulations, what the developer is required to provide, and the guidance is given, and provide some incentives for extra Greenway connections at the time of development. And we heard a presentation, and we had discussion, and voted unanimously to recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all have about the ordinance or anything that we discussed during the meeting, and after that, I'll be happy to make a motion to recommend approval with the full commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Otwell. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this ordinance? If not, then Commissioner Otwell.
All right. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated September 9th, 2025, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment.
Commissioner Otwell has moved to approval. Commissioner Fox has seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Next, we'll move on to old business. We have one item under old business, that's Z 1125, 2230 South New Hope Road. We received a full presentation from staff and the applicant at our August 26th meeting. We deferred the case to allow the applicant to consider conditions related to stormwater, and I believe Commissioner Cochrane wanted some further information about a nearby pump station. I'll ask staff to provide an update focused on changes since we last heard this case.
Good morning. This is Z 1125, 2230 South New Hope Road. Again, the request is to rezone 22.98 acres from CX 5 CU to CX 5 CU. Just for clarity's sake, I'll go over again, this was part of a rezoning in 2019 that incorporated two properties. Only one of the parcels this time is up for the rezoning, that's why only one of the parcels is having the conditions requested to be changed. Since the last meeting, new conditions were supplied, new number six, that would restrict the floodplain area encroachment impact to 40%, which are what the current conditions on that property are, and this was crafted with the assistance of stormwater. And I apologize about the Big Branch Pump Station. I did not remember to get further information on that. I do remember my original conversations with them where driveway would have to be secured so they have permanent access with enough to handle a truck going down through there, but as far as the remainder of information on that, I apologize, I didn't get anything back.
Okay, thank you. We did receive public comment at our previous meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, with that objection, I'll give five minutes to each side.
Great. Good morning. Michael Birch, Longleaf Law Partners, here on behalf of the applicant, and just wanted to maybe address the questions you had with regard to the pump station. So there is an existing easement providing access to the pump station, surrounding the pump station, all in favor of the City of Raleigh. It was upsized as part of the Old Town development, and there's more than sufficient capacity to serve this development as well as other, you know, future development in the area. I don't know if those were the nature of your questions, or if you had any other.
Yes, we'll just bring it back to the table to Commissioner Cochrane.
So my question was in regards to odors. The other lift station nearby, they noted sulfur smells, and I was curious to see if there was a similar issue here.
We're not aware of any. Now, there isn't any development on this side, right, the west side of New Hope where the pump station is located. That is not something we heard at our neighborhood meetings, and we had attendees both from the neighborhood to the west, the neighborhood to the north, and I believe we had, at our first neighborhood meeting, an attendee from Old Town, and that was not, that issue was not raised here, so.
Is the city staff aware of any issues?
Nothing was addressed in the comments received, and nothing was addressed in the original notes from staff.
Can I add to that, to answer her question, since I do live near this? There is a smell. There is a smell.
Okay, thank you. Just checking, is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, so we'll keep it at the table now. Are there any additional questions or comments related to the additional condition that has been added? Commissioner Omakay.
My comment is to the, not necessarily just to this condition, I do also want to reiterate, I live up the street from this.
Can you talk in your microphone, please?
I live up the street from this development. There has been inadequate community engagement. I even after the last meeting drove around New Hope and up Rock Quarry to see if there were any signs. There was one sign that is set back into the property on the New Hope side where nobody can see it. Nobody can stop and know that this is happening. I measured my home to the edge of this property, I am within a thousand feet. I was not notified, other residents were not notified, the CAC was not brought into this conversation. What the pictures on this presentation don't show is the kitty corner street from this development that is swampland. So I want to reiterate the concern I brought up last time of multiple developments being done in one area. We approved in that meeting affordable housing up Rock Quarry about a mile from this development. The meeting before that, we approved on New Hope less than a mile from this development. The Barwell Road, which she's referring to about a smell, and everybody's saying they don't see one, as a person who is directly impacted or would be by this project, there is a odor that is in this area. Multiple developments being done in this area will increase the likelihood of flooding, even if this one developer does make their, you know, make their conditions to make this not happen. Us developing a lot, approving a lot of development in a short area that's less than a two-mile radius from each other, that is highly being overdeveloped up Rock Quarry Road, will cause an issue. This area is in a flood zone. There is a better place where there could have been signage put on the corner of New Hope and Rock Quarry where Jones Sausage meets, that is a busy intersection where a lot of people would have seen the signs. It almost seems like people weren't intended to be engaged in this process. The terrain that this development is on, on the New Hope side, at Rock Quarry, is extremely rocky, it's over a bridge, is gonna be, is gonna be very, very disruptive, and I do think that this development will not be in the best interest of the environment of New Hope, New Bern and Jones Sausage, nor will it be in the best interest of the residents. I think that it is a significant harm to the residents in this area if this project passes.
Thank you, Commissioner Omakay. Would the applicant or staff like to comment on Commissioner Omakay's comments about engagement and sign placement, and how that is determined?
Yes. Yeah, Michael Birch with the applicant, and certainly will have staff address this as well. But we receive from the city the notice list, both for the 500-foot radius for the first neighborhood meeting, as well as the list of property owners and tenants within 1,000 feet for the second neighborhood meeting. You're right, you are within 1,000 feet. You are also on the mailing list. We provide as part of our neighborhood meeting report to the city that should be in your backup material, the full mailing list. We then submit to the city the set of envelopes stamped, addressed, sealed, and they review that against the list and then put it in the mail. So we certainly complied with those. We also receive guidance from the city as to where the signs need to be placed, both on the property and on any multi-tenant properties within that notice area. Those were all posted in accordance with that city guidance as well. With regard to the CAC meeting, we reached out to Dr. Lane. We are presenting this Thursday evening at the Southeast CAC meeting. Dr. Lane was also present at our second neighborhood meeting. So that's with regard to kind of the notice of the meeting, neighborhood meetings as well as this meeting, and what will ultimately be the City Council public hearing. Just on the comments related to environmental impacts, right, the city's regulations now prohibit any fill within the 100-year floodplain. What we did here with this condition is even took it a step further. Even with the 100, kind of 100% not allowing any fill within the floodplain, there is an exception where if you do a flood study or go through a map amendment, Stormwater asked us to keep this 40% restriction, which again is above and beyond what the code would require if you went through one of those processes. The areas that are environmentally sensitive on this property, right, we cannot develop within, we can't develop within any of the stream buffers, we can't develop with any of the areas within the floodplain. That's both the floodway itself, as well as the 100-year floodplain outside of that, and many of those areas are also subject to City of Raleigh easements for utilities. I want to remind the commission that, you know, this is not a situation where we are going from like a low-density, you know, zoning right now. The site is currently zoned CX 5 and allows for commercial and office uses. So, right, this site is already entitled for, you know, significant development that, you know, again, can max out the site. So just want to make sure that the commission understands, this isn't a situation of going kind of from a low, low intensity to more intensity. We are actually, through our cap on residential uses, maintaining kind of the trip generation potential allowed under current zoning as well, and certainly if it's developed for residential, it will be significantly below, you know, any commercial development on the property.
Thank you. Let me ask a question for staff. Do you know why with the previous rezoning, residential was prohibited in a condition?
I do not. It was just listed as a condition.
Okay, yeah, I tried to find it as well, I just saw that it was prohibited.
Yeah, I read through everything the other day again, I just, I couldn't find the rhyme and reason why the uses were reduced, that were restricted, including residential.
Just to address that question, Chair Bennett, so I did not handle, was not part, and our firm was not part of the prior rezoning, but certainly was here and listened, and were at CAC meetings where this was being, going through the first time. So at the time, the same applicant that was rezoning this side of New Hope was also rezoning the east side of New Hope, right, kind of the commercial area within, you know, on the east side adjacent to the Old Town development. Their vision was for a commercial development. Now, let me see, that group is no longer, you know, did not execute on the retail. This site has been marketed for retail for over eight years, and because of the environmental impacts, because of the side of the road it's on, because of the lack of visibility from Rock Quarry Road, it is not a suitable site for commercial. And so after nearly a decade of trying to market it for commercial, the owners, again, who kind of deferred to the contract purchaser the first time around, who wanted to do commercial, are now under contract with a residential developer who is changing, is asking to change the conditions to allow residential.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Omakay, then Commissioner Otwell. Okay, Commissioner Otwell.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. I, I believe that the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission met within the past week or so, and this was going to be on their agenda. I was wondering if Stormwater staff could give us a rundown on that discussion, and if there were any concerns from that commission.
Sally Hoyt, Raleigh Stormwater, thank you, Commissioner Otwell. The Stormwater Management Advisory Commission, or SMAC, briefly discussed this case. They are actually interested in hearing more about it and plan to reach out to the developer to ask, and to planning to ask them to come to their next meeting, which would be before this got heard by City Council.
Commissioner Omakay.
I just also want to stress that I did also do my due diligence last week to walk up friendly and knock on doors of my neighbors, and went around the block and the whole community knocking on doors. Nobody on that side of this project heard about this, got any information in their mailbox, much like myself. Last time we were here, we were told that I was not in the zone. It also is concerning me about the other project where I said, my mom's house is right here, and she wasn't. So I really think on, on our side, we need to figure that part out, but I don't feel like there's been enough good faith efforts done to make sure that the community has been involved in this. Obviously, Stormwater wants more information. He's saying they're meeting with the CAC after this meeting. This decision doesn't have to be made until October. I would make a suggestion even to this commission to maybe take some time and drive by this area where there, because this is, I'm taking much, you know, concern with this, also because I would be personally impacted by it, but not just by my personal impact. I do believe that this will have a major environmental impact along with the other developments, so I would hope that if we could get more time before making a decision on this today, to give us time to do our, drive by the area and actually see where the sign is, that it's only one, there are not multiple signs, it's not on the busy side of the street where people can see it and be engaged, so I think that there needs to be more data.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? I appreciate what Commissioner Omakay is saying. I do have a question though, because I think the conditions have been altered at least one time at this point, so we would not have the opportunity to change them. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay, so they, the conditions wouldn't, we might know more information, but the zoning conditions wouldn't be able to change between now and council?
Right.
Okay, so is this an instance, Chair Bennett, where we could make a motion based on the current conditions, but then make a recommendation to council regarding other items that might be addressed at the time of council?
I think so. So Commissioner Omakay, the regulations changed, and the applicant can only, what we refer to as get one bite at the apple, so they've already changed the conditions. So even if we were to defer the case again for us to get more information, we couldn't ask them to change anything again, but we can note with whatever recommendation we make to City Council, that they take into account any information that comes from Stormwater Management Commission, or any recommendations that staff might have for them to change conditions. We just can't do it at this point.
I do understand that. I think my, my point is to say, before we make a decision and vote one way or the other, even making suggestions to City Council, making a more informed decision, being able to hear from Stormwater after they hear from them, allowing him to speak to the CAC and knowing what was brought back from that, allowing there to be more communication or mailouts, if that's what's supposed to happen, so that there can be community engagement, so we can at least know what, like have all the information, so we can make a decision if we vote for or against it, even if we're gonna add some extra insight to City Council when we send it to them. So I do want to make a motion that we defer this.
Is there any other discussion before we take up this motion to defer? Yes, Commissioner O'Haver.
And I apologize, because I was not at the last meeting, so take that in mind. Just want to make sure I'm clear. In the staff report, it says, "The most significant change are the following: allowing residential uses, reduction in allow gross floor area for office and commercial, limit on number of non-residential properties, addition to a limit of dwelling units, clarifying dedication of Greenway easements, and being more stringent on the fill." So if we recommend denial of this, none of those conditions are in place, correct? Because to me, that seems like a mistake.
That sounds right.
And I know I'm over-talking, but I'm only over-talking, because this is directly impacting my home. This is why I'm speaking up a bunch about this. I honestly don't think that it should be residential. I know that that adds to the housing supply of the area, but that also adds to the safety concerns of traffic in this area that I've raised. The safety concerns of this area, I've raised traffic on this two-lane road, multiple developments within a very tight area that will also then impact the living, the quality of life of the residents in this area, their concerns being made. If it's developed as it is with commercial and a grocery store or something that could be useful, but more people living on that particular place where it could flood, with their, their additional waste in a space that already has a smell prior to this, you know what I'm saying? Like I think there's other environmental and residential conditions that can impact the wellness of life of the people in this area, including myself.
I, Commissioner Neptune, give me just a second. When we're going to defer a case, I want to make sure that, I know we're causing delay to the applicant, but I want to make sure it's gonna change something. So I don't know about the rest of you, but I feel like I have done my due diligence on this. I've seen the site, I've read the staff report. At this point, I don't think there's anything that the Stormwater Advisory Commission could say to me that's gonna make me change my mind. So if we defer the case, I want to make sure that we all think it's going to give us more information than what we have now to make a decision. If we all feel like we're ready to vote, then I would recommend that we not defer the case and put our concerns in whatever recommendation we send to council, and then council can take that up. But if it is the will of the commission to defer the case, then I'll certainly go with that. Commissioner Neptune?
Thank you, Chair Bennett. Just a question for clarification with regard to public engagement and ongoing community engagement. This will be heard by the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission in weeks to come. It will be heard by the CAC, it will be heard by council.
Yes.
In other words, I think, and again, I'm asking for clarification, so in other words, there are, there are additional opportunities
Yes.
in the weeks ahead for additional public engagement with this specific item. So I just, so I'm clear on that.
I believe the applicant said that you're speaking to the CAC this week, on Thursday?
Yes, we are going to the Southeast CAC on Thursday, the 11th, that's this Thursday. I wanted to just, on the record, commit to this body, that we will, you know, staff can certainly take our rezoning to Stormwater Management Advisory Commission. I'll commit to this group that we will also be present at that meeting. Not only will they meet prior to the public hearing, they will actually meet prior to council making a decision of when to schedule the public hearing. This will be reported to council at their first meeting in October, which is the 7th. SMAC meets on the 1st Thursday of the month, which is the 2nd. So again, we will have those two meetings prior to this even getting to council for scheduling a public hearing.
Okay.
And I just want to acknowledge my appreciation to the applicant for clarification.
Okay, let me just, please be recognized before you speak. Thank you. There is a motion on the table. Commissioner Omakay made a motion that we defer the case. Is there a second for that motion? Okay, so let me make sure I'm doing this right. So the motion fails when there's no second? Okay. Is there any further discussion on this case? Any questions, any comments? Commissioner Cochrane?
So I acknowledge the point about deferring, it will not change the conditions. However, I think that my, my perspective on this is that I haven't seen any incentives for changing the zoning to residential, other than it's not appropriate for a commercial development, but I think there were three inconsistencies, and I just don't feel, I don't feel like those are resolved in my mind enough to support it, even though I am willing to vote on it today.
Okay, thank you.
But not in support of it.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, let me add my comments, because I've been trying to listen and take it all in and get more comfortable in this role as chair, where I don't talk as much, I just listen and try to keep the meeting flowing, but I spent a lot of time looking at this case, and I'm not really comfortable with it, with it being residential, because of the proximity to the floodway. And even the staff report has that noted as a detriment, the risk of flooding. We had a similar case last year or a year before last, where we had an affordable housing rezoning that was close to a floodway, wasn't in the flood zone, but it was close to it, and I had, I strongly opposed to that. I was strongly opposed to that, because I just don't feel comfortable putting residents in what I view to be harms way, particularly residents that might be vulnerable and less likely to be able to recover from something like that. So I do appreciate that the applicant worked with Stormwater to add this condition, but it doesn't remove the risk for me, and so I'm uncomfortable with that. I also note the fire standards, the insufficiency there, and I know we talk about this a lot, and we've talked about them. the insufficiency there, and I know we talk about this a lot and we've talked about the Fire Master Plan. But this is in the ETJ and would need to be annexed for development if I read the staff report correctly. And it feels different for me if it's residential now. So I know sometimes we kind of gloss over that and just note it, but we note that the Fire Master Plan is going to address that insufficiency. In this case, I think it's important that we not gloss over it and note that these are 175 families that possibly low income if we just look at the census tract in an area that doesn't meet the NFPA standards for fire response. So that coupled with the flood risk screams environmental justice concerns for me. And so regardless of what other additional information I hear, it doesn't change where the parcel is. It doesn't change the flood zone. It doesn't change those risks. So I, I wouldn't be able to support this case as a residential rezoning. Any other questions, comments? If not, then I will entertain a motion. Commissioner O'Haver?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And again, my apologies. I wasn't here, so.
You don't have to apologize.
Yeah.
Questions, comments, just?
I just, again, I want to clarify, the current zoning restricts residential.
Yes.
And one of the main changes here is to allow residential. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion? I would do it, but I'm struggling with my internet. Okay. Give me a second. I can pull it up. I will make the motion. Oh, thank you. Are we ready?
I could, I could try to.
You can go ahead if you'd like to.
After considering the policies, maps and other materials included as a part of the comprehensive plan, the planning commission determines that the proposed rezoning amendment is for a zoning district that closely corresponds with developing envisioned for the future land use map designation and is therefore... Am I supposed to read all that?
Go to the top. Read what's at the top.
I move to recommend, I do not move to rec, I move to not recommend adoption.
Just read it as it is. Read it as it is.
Okay. I move to recommend adoption. This says approval, though.
Oh, well, pull up the one that says denial. If you have the one that says approval, it's fine. You can still read it just where it says and to recommend approval, so recommend denial if that's what your motion is.
Okay. I move to recommend adoption. I do not move.
No. Read it as it is.
I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated September 9, 2025, contained in the agenda materials and recommend denial of the zoning amendment.
Commissioner Omakay has made a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Cochrane has seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of denial? That's six. All opposed? Two. Motion passes six to two. Thank you. I didn't, before we leave this, I'm sorry. Commissioner Omakay, would you like to add any considerations for counsel along with your motion?
Other than that I can?
I mean, anything that you would like counsel to consider? The, the SMAC conversation, the CAC?
I would like counsel to consider the whole conversation that we've had here at the commission and consider the last meeting's discussion. I would like for them to consider the impact environmentally of this development on the community. I would like them to consider the impact of the residents in this community and also like to them consider that making sure as we go forward in the future that we make significant intentional effort to make sure everybody impacted by any development happening in the city is informed with sufficient amount of time to be able to show up to planning commission, I mean, to, to meetings concerning things that will impact them in the future.
Thank you. That was our only old business item. Moving on to new business.
Excuse me, Chair Bennett?
Yes?
I just would like to, again, for the record, typically we ask if there are
Yes.
any additional, additional comments. In addition to the five or six bullets that I mentioned during hearing the case, I, I just want to stress again the, the point that the applicant made that the the land is currently zoned for commercial and it's been sitting there for almost a decade. And I think while certainly there are not a lot of good sites left to develop, I think there's a need for residential. I think there's a lot of development in that area. I think it supports a residential there. I know there are a lot of concerns and issues, but just want to further explain why I voted to not accept the denial, if that's the right way to say it.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Haver. Commissioner Otwell, would you like to explain your opposition as well?
Yeah, sure. I, I think that our city's flooding regulations and FEMA's policies are stringent and appropriate and that we shouldn't be in the position of making technical decisions about possible flooding. We should rely on experts for these. In this, in this case is aligns with the intention of the development from the applicant.
Thank you. Now, on to new business. We have rezoning TCZ 1325 3219 Pool Road. This is our first time hearing this case, so we'll turn to staff for a full presentation.
Good morning again. Hiram Marziano, Long Range Planning. This is TCZ 1325. This is properly located at 3219 Pool Road. It's on the corner of Sunny Brook and Pool Road there on the north, by northeast corner, or northwest corner. It's a request to rezone 1.61 acres from NX3CU to NX3CU. This is a change in text, a change in the text conditions. Deadline for action is November 8. Zoning this area is predominantly residential and mixed use kind of equally. You can see that the residential area is primarily to the north and west of this property with a lot of mixed use as it follows that corridor on down to the highway. Here's a scaled out version for you so you can just see the general mix of the area. As we zoom in a little bit, there's that neighborhood directly abutting to the west and the church property to the north, which are the subject of several of the conditions and their changes. Just some quick visuals of the site. For those who may know from previous, there used to be a house on this property. It was removed. The photo, they took historical photos of it archival quality and were given to historic preservation as a record-keeping function. Of those conditions, there are several. The first two are unchanged. These restrict the uses of the property, including several of the neighborhood mixed use, uses and detached dwelling units. Condition number three maintains reduction, building height to 45 feet and removing the transition requirements as it would not apply. Number four is unchanged and limits the hours of operation for certain business types. Former number five, as I've mentioned, was removed and was related to that house. So as we reorder these, we're looking at, this took out the townhouse type from requiring urban frontage, but urban frontage would be required for any type of apartment building or mixed-use building. Number six, we're setting the, sets the dimensional standards and planning requirements of the protective yard to be established along the property lines adjoining the church to the north. Seven clarifies information regarding the rear building facades to maintain a wall, let no more than 28 feet of blank wall area and references correct sections of the ordinance. Number eight deals with pole mounted light fixtures north and west property, that residential and the church property. Nine and 10 are both similar and dealing with screening requirements also for those two proper, properties to the west and the north. And number 11 would be increasing the maximum number of residential units from what's currently allowed at 22 to 32. And number 12 clarifies that when a transition, a neighborhood transition protective yard is required along those property lines to the north and the west, how exactly they will be, they will be the 25-foot minimum as applied by the ordinance. Here we have our existing versus proposed. You can see here that we're losing a little bit of office and retail entitlement for the gaining of residential entitlement. This area has a higher walk score, higher transit score, lower bike score. Good cost of transportation and high proximity to jobs. You can see here on the Route 19 that this actually has two stops that are actually on the, at the property for transit. We are adding to the housing supply. It does not include subsidized units. Permits a variety of housing types other than detached dwelling. Smaller units are allowed than city average and it's walking distance of transit being located at, with two stops on the property. Some demographics for the area. You can see that rent increased significantly since 2016. This is consistent with neighborhood mixed use. The future land use map was updated the last time this was rezoned to neighborhood mixed use. So since NX is staying as NX, it's consistent. Due to the condition number five now, it would be consistent with the urban form map of being on a transit emphasis corridor and within a frequent transit area. So consistent with the future land use map, consistent with comprehensive plan, consistent with the urban form map. Several of the policies that we are consistent, that the applicant is consistent with here. And currently, the inconsistent policy would be response times fires, for fire safety. Deadline for action would be November 8 with upcoming meetings on the 23rd, the 14th, and the 28th.
Thank you. We'll now move to public comment. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes.
Let me get that for you. All right. Good morning. Chair Bennett, members of the planning commission, Toby Coleman, here on behalf of the owner, Southern Properties, regarding this zoning text change. Hiram did a good job of outlining it. You know, I think the, the salient points here really are, this is a request to increase the permitted number of unit, residential units from 22 to 32, largely to facilitate a, a potential townhome development at the site. The rest of the changes are largely technical. The, the prior zoning conditions, which are from 2019, made a lot of references to the neighborhood transitions. But because of, because of various exceptions to the neighborhood transitions, it was a little bit confusing as to whether those would apply or not. So we wanted to sort of clarify the language around those. And so that language, what we put in is language that regardless of whether the ordinance says it applies, it would, the conditions now would, would apply. So for instance, there's a buffer provided for the church to the north. Under the current regulations, a church does not trigger a neighborhood transition requirement. Now we would be requiring a buffer no matter what. We did meet with the church in advance of filing this rezoning and they did, they did provide us with a letter in support of it. Happy to pass that around if you guys would like to see it. The, you know, other, as, as Hiram noted, there are some other conditions related to things like blank wall and other things that were, again, referencing, referencing the wrong code or doing some other things that, that just were, we wanted to clean up. I have, if, if anybody has any questions, I have very detailed slides for each of the changes where we could go through and and outline sort of what we've done. But if, if you have questions, we are available for, we're available. So with that up.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anyone else here to speak in support of this case? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the table. Do we have any questions or comments for staff or the applicant? I had one for the applicant. Toby, I may be misunderstanding, so this may just be like something that I need clarification for, but when I was reading about the, the plantings that will screen the wall? It said that it would it would be screened by 50% at maturity?
Yeah.
Why not fully screened?
That was, well, the, the answer is, is that that is consistent with what's in the UDO.
Okay.
And it is also what was, the 50% standard was also what was in the prior condition. Mainly what we tweaked was, was basically just trying to, you know, the, the prior provisions referenced a UDO, UDO provision that contained a lot of the language. We just sort of spelled it out more specifically for screening wall. And then we also had, at staff's request, we separated out for both, and I'm just looking because this always, always sort of trips me up, but basically there is a unenclosed loading areas standard and a trash collection, trash compacting area standard. Previously, those conditions had mushed them together, so that was all one standard. Staff recommended that we break those apart, so that's what we did. But we, we retained the, the concept that was in the, the existing ordinances.
Thank you. And also thank you for letting us know you met with the church. That was one of my questions too, if you had spoken with them. So that's all I have. Any other, Commissioner Omakay?
Have you all had an opportunity to significantly inform the residents that are going to be, that live in the townhomes adjacent to the church? And what has their, been their response to this development?
We did have, we held a neighborhood meeting and so we did get, that was, most of the attendees were from the Montage Development that is next door to the, to the west. There are some questions and concerns just about traffic, height, things like that. And so what we did was basically explain that a lot of the existing, a lot of the requirements that are currently in place will, will remain in place in terms of buffering. It's actually fairly, the way that that property is shaped, I'm not sure if I have it on this one, but the way that the property is shaped, if you look at that, it, it actually had a pretty minimal touch onto the Montage Development. And if, there's no cross-access into the Montage Development. This property is coming out onto Sunny Brook, really. And so we sort of just outlined those issues and as we discussed it with them. But there is a, there, there will meet, continue to be a buffer provision. And then again, we had various sort of blank wall and other provisions to try to further provide some, some, to address their concerns.
What's a blank wall?
A wall without a window or any other sort of break.
Like the back of the building?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fox, did you have a question?
No, I was going to say overall this change is somewhat minor in comparison to other cases we've seen. And I'm not finding any inconsistency and I'd be ready to support it at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments before we entertain a motion? Okay. Commissioner Fox?
In regards to case TCZ 1325, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated September 9, 2025, contained in the agenda materials and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Fox has made a motion. Commissioner Burnett has made a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Our next new business item is rezoning Z 1725 Lewisburg Road. I'll note that this is also associated with the next new business item, Z 1825 Kyle Drive, but they are separate, so we'll hear them separately. So Z 1725 Lewisburg Road. We'll hear from staff.
Hello again. Hiram Marziano. This is Z 1725. This is a assemblage of four parcels on Lewisburg Road. The request is to rezone those four parcels totaling 3.9 acres from R1 to R10 conditional use. The deadline for action would be November 8. Zoning this area is predominantly residential. There is some mixed use up and down the road, a little bit further out, but you'll notice that it has R4, R1, and R10 surrounding it completely with R10 CU adjacent to the north. The area is moderate-scale residential, low-scale residential. Some of the future developments have been listed for high-scale residential as you move down the highway. As said previously, this is also from the same applicants of Z 1825, which you'll note is across the street behind the church. Here's an arrow of the site with subdivision behind it. Just some street views of the vacant land currently. It does, but back up to, I just now forgot the name of that road, Black Maple Drive there on the, the rear side, number three there. The conditions being proposed would prohibit the uses of cemetery and parking facilities that would normally be allowed in R10. You can see here that the change primarily is going to be with setback distances plus the maximum allowed units. R1 would allow for one dwelling unit per acre essentially, so only each of these four lots would only allow for one unit. Under R10 CU, they'd be allowed up to a maximum of 75. It does have sidewalks adjacent. However, we are at a lower walk score than average for the city, lower transit score for the city, lower bike score for the city, being right there off of 401. Does have a decent transportation cost, higher than the city's average, and it really is close to several jobs in the sector. Popped on here, there's two close bus routes, but you'll note that this is .8 miles from one and 1.1 miles from another, so it's really not within walking distance of transit. Does add to the housing supply, no subsidized units in the application. Does permit a variety of housing types, detached, attached, townhome, apartment buildings. Smaller units are allowed than city average with smaller lots than city average, not within walking distance of transit. Just some key demographics in this area. Again, increased cost of rent in the area. Likely more lower income than city average in this area. It is inconsistent with the future land use map. The future land use map does have this area as low-scale residential. Low-scale residential typically looks at R2, R4, R6. R10, we usually see closer to moderate-scale residential. Being outside of a transit corridor or transit overlay, R10 is really not suitable for low-scale residential. I will point out as well, though, that the neighboring subdivision behind it is R10 CU as well, so take that for what it is. We are along a Parkway corridor, this being a residential project, a residential zoning, not mixed use. There's no need for any frontage guidance. Is consistent with our comprehensive plan, inconsistent with the future land use map, and technically non-applicable to the urban form map. Consistent policies here for you in your packet as well. Inconsistent policies, we're looking at response time standards and inconsistency with the future land use map. Upcoming meetings would be the 23rd, 14th, 28th deadline for action. If this does go through and is approved, there would be a need to update the future land use map along with this request. And would take it most likely to moderate-scale residential being that that is what is associated with the area across the street and further down the highway.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have a total of 10 minutes.
Good morning, Chair Bennett. Ashley Honeycutt-Trazas with Parker Poe here on behalf of the applicant, St. Matthew Baptist Church. And we did want to request that the, the board hear the staff report for the next case, since it is the same applicant and the two cases are related. And I think it's going to make more sense to everybody if I present them together, so would it be okay to?
That's fine.
Okay, great.
So we'll hear from staff, the presentation for Z 1825 now.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Arthur Cashwell the fourth. I'm here to present rezoning case Z 1825 for the 4.66 acre site located at 5209 Kyle Drive. The applicant is St. Matthew's Baptist Church. The applicant is requesting a zoning from R-6 CU to R10 CU. According to the future land use map, the area is designated as moderate-scale residential. The current R6 district currently permits single-unit detached homes on a minimum of 6,000 square foot lot, as well as attached townhouse and duplex units. Compact, conservation, and cottage court developments are also allowed with preserved open space, and transit-oriented modifications may apply in overlay areas. The proposed R10 district allows for a greater residential density, including detached homes on lots as small as 4,000 square feet, duplexes, townhouses, and multifamily apartments, along with the same compact and conservation development options. So basically, it allows a greater variety of housing types at higher densities consistent with the site's future land use map designation. There are two pre-existing conditions associated with this site. The first is development should be limited to single-family development on property, and should be limited to detached homes on separate lots. The second is developers should comply with CR-7107 stormwater requirements. There is one new zoning condition associated with this request, and that is the development should not connect to RB Drive. The surrounding zoning pattern is predominantly moderate-scale residential. However, the closest zoning is R1 and RX3. NX, well, neighborhood mixed-use residential, R4 and R10 are located within 1,000 feet of the site. This map presents the proposed rezoning site, which is outlined in red with the small section of the property frontage located along Kyle Drive. The site is directly adjacent to St. Matthew's Baptist Church, which is outlined in blue. And across the street outlined in purple are the four parcels that are part of the joint rezoning quest Z-1725. This map presents a zoomed-out aerial view of the proposed rezoning site outlined in yellow at the intersection of RB Drive and Kyle Drive. Surrounding zoning includes a mix of low, medium, and moderate-scale residential districts, as well as nearby mixed-use districts. The surrounding zoning context includes R1 districts to the north, east, and south, and residential mixed-use to the west, which is the location of the Winston Park Apartments. Surrounding land uses are a mix of churches, apartments, and single-family neighborhoods. This picture just shows an aerial view of the site alone outlined in yellow. This image shows the site from the property frontage along Kyle Drive. The summary of proposed conditions, there is one new zoning condition associated with this request. Development should not connect to RB Drive. There are also two pre-existing conditions associated with this site. As previously stated, development should be limited to single-family development on property. It should be limited to detached homes on separate lots, and two developers should comply with CR-7107 stormwater requirements. The rezoning request keeps most developmental standards the same acreage, height setbacks, but allows for a modest increase in density. Zoning change from R6 CU residential up to six units acre with conditions to R10 up to 10 units acres with conditions. The lot size is 4.66 acres total. There's no change in building form. Both districts cap height at 40 feet in three stories with identical setbacks, 10 feet for the front, 5 feet for the side, and 20 feet for the rear. The main difference is the number of permitted homes, 24 units under R6 CU and 33 units under R10 CU, a roughly 37% increase in potential housing. In short, the proposal keeps the same building scale and site layout standards, but allows more housing units on the same site, increasing residential capacity without changing the visual or physical impact of development. As far as the transportation and energy analysis, walkability with the walk score of eight versus the city average of 31, the site is highly car-dependent and not walkable. There is no transit score available suggesting little or no public transit access. In terms of bike friendliness, a bike score of eight versus the city average of 41 shows that biking is not a realistic option for most trips. In terms of transportation costs, the HUD Low Transportation Cost Index is at the 60 cents, is at the 66 percentile, which indicates residents spend a smaller share of income on transportation than average despite low multimodal options. Job access, the HUD Jobs Proximity Index at the 40th percentile means fewer nearby jobs compared to other city areas, limiting employment accessibility. In short, the site is, in short, the site is auto-oriented with poor walk, bike, and transit options, but relatively affordable transportation costs. However, access to nearby jobs is below average. There is no available bus transit service that serves this area. As for the affordability analysis, the rezoning would add to the housing supply by allowing smaller lot sizes and a higher unit yield. No naturally occurring affordable housing exists on the site, is vacant, and no subsidized units are proposed. The new zoning will permit multiple housing types beyond detached houses, expanding choice. The requested district allows smaller minimum lots, 4,000 square feet than typical, supporting more compact development. The site is not within walking distance of transit, so residents will likely be car-dependent. Overall, the proposal increases housing capacity and diversity, but does not directly provide affordable or subsidized units and lacks proximity to transit. In terms of demographics and land use history, the site area closely mirrors Raleigh overall with a similar demographic index of 35 versus 37. The people of color share a slightly higher at this site, 49%, compared to the city 46%. The site has a much lower share of low-income households, 6% versus 29%, suggesting relatively higher income status, I mean economic status, I'm sorry. Rates of limited English-speaking households are slightly higher, 4% versus 3%. Fewer residents lack a high school education at the site, 2% versus 8%. The site area has a younger population with fewer children under five, that's 2% versus 6%, and fewer adults over 64, 4% versus 11%. Rent change data is unavailable for this site, but citywide rents have risen 25.5% since 2020, reflecting broader affordability pressures. In summary, the site area is slightly more diverse, younger, and more economically advantaged than the city overall, though it faces some rising rent environment, as does Raleigh. The proposed rezoning from residential 6 CU to residential 10 CU is consistent with the site's future land use map designation of moderate-scale residential, which supports a range of housing types, including small lot detached houses, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhouses, and garden apartments. This category encourages missing, missing middle housing at a scale consistent with existing neighborhood patterns. Both R6 and R10 are identified as corresponding districts within its designation. There are no urban form map designations associated with this site. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It would allow for a broader range of housing types and increased residential density in alignment with the moderate-scale residential designation on a future land use map. The rezoning expands opportunities for missing middle housing. It also promotes more efficient use of existing infrastructure and provides a logical transition between single-family neighborhoods and adjacent multifamily development, consistent with the managing our growth theme. The rezoning increases housing supply in northeast Raleigh, where housing demand and costs have risen in recent years. And the request therefore advances comprehensive plan policies that encourage diverse housing options, neighborhood compatibility, and growth in appropriate infill locations. This is a list of consistent policies related to this rezoning request. This is one of two pages, one of two slides, I'm sorry. This is the second slide showing the consistent policies. There were two inconsistent policies associated with this site. Both have to do with the site does not meet NFPA 1710 standards for the timely arrival of a full alarm assignment. This required, the required eight-minute travel time was not, is not achieved. There are no outstanding issues associated with this site. If, if additional discussion is needed beyond today, the next available opportunity will be at the September 23 meeting. The deadline for the Planning Commission to act in this case is November 8 of this year.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the applicant on, do you have two separate presentations? But, but let me check with staff, but we, we'll need to take these up separately, right? This will be two separate recommendations. Okay, so we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you very much, Hiram and Arthur. Again, I'm Ashley Honeycutt-Trazas with Parker Poe, 301 Fayetteville Street here in Raleigh. And I'm working with the St. Matthew Baptist Church on this rezoning request for properties that the church owns and has owned for many years. Deacon James Holloway is here with me this morning as well from St. Matthew. So I'll go through, I, I think it's going to be helpful, James, Mr. Holloway is going to come up and give the board a little background on why the church is requesting this. But I'll give a quick property overview and history. So again, like staff mentioned, the, for Z 1725, which is right across the street from St. Matthew Baptist Church, involves four parcels that they own. They bought them about nine years ago with the intention to develop them as a family life center and later determined that they were not the best fit for a family life center for the church. Z 1825 is zone R6 CU. Those zoning conditions were from 1994, which was, and the church was gifted this property in 1996, so these zoning conditions were already on this property when it was given to St. Matthew. And the, and I believe staff went through what those conditions are, but it's essentially the only use permitted on the property is single-family detached houses. And the, and then there's a reference to stormwater regulations that were effect, in effect in the 90s, which are no longer a part of the UDO. So anyway, so before I get into the, the request for the zoning and why we are asking for R10 CU for both of these sites, I wanted Deacon Holloway to come up and explain a little bit about what the church's vision is for both of these properties.
Good morning, Chair Bennett and Planning Commission. My name is Deacon James Holloway. I've been at St. Matthew's since 2004. And our vision for St. Matthew is to build, operate, and maintain a family center to serve St. Matthew members and the surrounding community for the purpose of adding and enhancing individual and collective Christian perspective. Our mission statement is that we would love to cultivate community inclusive, inclusive to all ages and cultural backgrounds by providing a safe facility for ministry, art, education, recreation, and celebration. Z 1725, the Lewisburg Road property that's across the street from the church. Our intent was to purchase that property to build the life center on that property. And we did purchase that property with that intent. We already had the property that's associated with Kyle Road. And we had a feasibility study conducted on both properties. The recommendation was that we build the life center on the property, on our campus, church campus. And, and we took that to heart, and we decided that, okay, with the Lewisburg Road property, we could use that property to possibly fund the life center that we are trying to fund. And we, in order to do that, we would have to get the property rezoned for high density and rezone according to what's being developed already in that area. The acreage is about four point, about four acres of property. And also, it would be a benefit to the individual homes in the back of us because they have a highway that is a dead-end road back there. So we're hoping that whoever the developer is that purchased the property from us on Lewisburg Road will consider affordable housing. Now, we, we can't dictate what they would do with the property. And also connect that highway, and it was identified by a gentleman here. Black Maple Drive, that give them a complete access instead of a dead-end highway back there. So it would be a benefit to them. And again, our intent and our hope is to rezone that property for sale to help fund the life center at Kyle Road. We are trying to add more value to the community in that area. We don't have a facility that can accommodate the people that live in the area. As you say, as they said before, there's limited bus service or no bus service. There is limited biking. If we're able to provide some life center facility. If we're able to provide some life center facility accommodations, it would definitely increase the value of that community also. And being not that far from the Raleigh area downtown, it would be very helpful to that community, I think.
Thanks, Deacon Holloway. So I'm going to go through kind of the more technical aspects of the request and why we're requesting these districts to support that vision that the church has for these properties. So again, as Deacon Holloway mentioned, the church recognizes that there's a housing need in the area. There's a lot of housing coming to this area. I'm sure the planning commission remembers, you know, these cases right over here, which were recently approved. There's apartments going up, you know, immediately next to the church over here. And then this site over here was approved by the city council just a few months ago, back in June. That was another R10 CU request. So again, to be consistent with the housing types and densities that are in the area. And then this is the Brandemere neighborhood. That is also R10 CU, as Arthur mentioned, or I'm sorry, as Hiram mentioned before. And so really, they're hoping to select a developer who can develop this at a scale that they believe is appropriate across from their church and in light of everything that's going on. And we did get a good community turnout at the neighborhood meetings and discussed permitted housing types, heights, things like that with the community. Also, the Black Maple Drive extension that Deacon Holloway mentioned. In our very first discussion with transportation staff, we talked through that, and that would be a requirement of the UDO if it's permitted by NC DOT. And then for the Kyle Drive property back here that abuts the church, as Deacon Holloway mentioned, the plan would be for that site to be used for the family life center that they have long envisioned. Community centers are permitted, a permitted use in R10 CU. My church has something very similar to what they're trying to do, and it's in a residential district. So, and we are requesting R10 to be with some more flexible development dimensional standards for that building. We did add a zoning condition, as staff mentioned, not to connect the development to RB Drive, which is this road right here. And that was in response to community feedback that we got. I think some of the folks that live on that road came to, we had two community meetings. They came to both. And their main concern was that they don't want any traffic on that road. It is a dirt road. It is technically public right-of-way. It was accepted by the city, but it's never been opened for public use. It's not built to city standards. And so we discussed this with transportation staff. And as the site has two points of access, one right here on Kyle Drive, and then the church's plan is actually to connect it via cross-access easement into their parking lot. So it would, you know, all the access would come from the church's property, which would be permitted by the UDO. In coordination with transportation staff, we worked out that condition about not connecting, you know, voluntarily connecting to RB Drive, which would not be required to be extended or under the UDO. And... Erase this. Anyway, so just to wrap up...
I'll be real quick.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Not going to the menu.
Sorry about that. So just pulling it back to the future land use map. For Z1725, or sorry, for Z1825, the Kyle Drive site, it's directly consistent with the moderate-scale residential. R10 is directly consistent with that future land use map designation. And with respect to the Lewisburg Road site, for the reasons we've already discussed, we do think that the change to the moderate-scale residential from low-scale residential is appropriate. And the type of residential uses and densities that are permitted in R10, again, is appropriate in light of other development and zoning in the vicinity and would allow for more housing to be built there. And that, and I'll just end on the consistent policies. These are not all the consistent policies in the staff report, but the key ones that staff found both requests to be consistent with. Again, just kind of highlighting that there's a need for housing. We don't want to prohibit housing or housing types, which is currently what's going on with the Kyle Drive property. And we respectfully ask that you recommend a proposal.
Thank you. Okay, so we will bring these both back to the table, but we're going to discuss them individually to keep everything straight and to help Shanita with her minutes. So let's start with Z1725, which is the Lewisburg Road property. Do we have questions or comments? Commissioner Otwell.
I just have a quick comment. Thank you, Chair Bennett. I don't have any issues that I'm seeing with this proposal, and I plan to support it. But I'd like to point out that I think this demonstrates some of my problems with the walk score and the transit score that we use, which is very formulaic. It's true that this site is a mile away from the transit stops, but I believe this is one of the most transit-dependent parts of the city, and bike score is low. I hate biking up here. But every time I'm out here, I see many people out there on the sidewalks using bikes to get to bus stops and get to jobs and using it for transit. I think the kind of population goes largely ignored in these kind of discussions. But I think that this is some of the most bike-dependent and pedestrian-dependent parts of the city. And I think a mile is not too great of a distance to expect some people in this neighborhood to take advantage of the strong transit that exists and is going to be improved over the next several years along the Capitol Boulevard corridor. So get off my podium now.
Thank you, Commissioner Otwell. Other questions or comments for Z1725? Mr. Burnett, Commissioner Omakay.
I don't have any issues with it. I think it'd be a great addition to that area. That area needs, you know, it could benefit from more density from, you know, the type of housing style that's been presented. So I would definitely be offer supporting it and be ready to make a motion when the time comes.
Thank you, Commissioner Burnett. Commissioner Omakay.
Before they made a comment about old stormwater rules, I was wondering if we can kind of get a little more into that and talk about with the removal of the trees on the Kyle... The old stormwater rules.
That's the, wait a minute, that's Z18...
Yeah, that's the other case on Kyle Drive.
Hold that question. Okay. Commissioner O'Haver.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. A question for the applicant, maybe to start with staff. The difference between the existing zoning and the proposed zoning probably won't be a surprise to anybody on the commission. The existing zoning is a sum of a side yard of 10 feet, and the proposed is five feet. And the existing rear yard is 30 feet, and proposed is 20 feet. So my question to the applicant would be, again, if I purchased a home, there's three houses that are sitting adjacent to this property. If I purchased that home and I see an R1 zoning, would it be different if it was already an R10 or something that allowed retail? But would there be a consideration to just maintain or at least increase to some degree the rear yard and maintain the sum of the side yard, which seems like... I say this hesitantly, a minimal change. I know even five feet has a huge impact on developments, but five feet also has a huge impact on adjacent property owners. So that's my only concern. Otherwise, I think it's a fantastic project and totally willing to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Haver.
Just for clarity, the question is, would they be willing to do conditions to offer scaling similar to...
Correct.
Okay, around the peripheral for all the development.
The sum of the side yard and the rear yard, adjacent to where there's existing housing and just looking at where it's located.
We did get neighbors from that area that came to the neighborhood meetings, and that concern wasn't raised. And I did want to note that that is where most of the trees are on the site. So TCA would apply here because this is over two acres. So likely, you know, Black Maple Drive extending through to Lewisburg Road, right? And then I would imagine that's probably where the TCA is going to have to be. But, you know, we don't have a site plan yet. So I think the, and we don't, and as I mentioned before, we don't have a developer, you know, and we are hoping to keep this as flexible as possible. So is the specific request like if it were townhouse lots or whatever, like that the setback be the same as... Okay.
And I think the fact that there's not a developer, and we talk about this a lot, putting those conditions, we assume the TCA is going to be there, but we don't know that. So I don't want to move forward assuming that those trees are going to exist. So I would feel more comfortable if, at least where it's adjacent, we could maintain those setbacks. And I assume TCA can occur in the setbacks, so...
Setback of lots, yeah.
Yes, the rear yard and the side yard. So TCA can exist there. And the trees are there, then it just doubly pushes them towards maintaining that, the trees there and the separation between the developments.
Yeah, I just would want to be careful in how we word that because I don't know, you know, how the house is going to sit on a... Like a townhouse would sit on the lot, you know, in the size of the town. Again, assuming it would be a townhouse development, if that's what it ends up being. But can we pull up what the difference is?
10 feet on the rear yard and an additional sum of five feet on the side yard. And just tactically, I'm not sure the rest of the commission agrees with me. So this is just my personal, this is just my personal perspective on this, so...
Your perspective is important, so...
Oh, I know, no, I'm just saying. I mean, we're going, she's jumping through some hoops here. I just want to point out that maybe not everybody agrees with me, so...
Did you want to say something, Commissioner Cochran, while they're pulling it up?
Yeah, I share Commissioner O'Haver's concern. We did receive an email from one of those residents, in fact, with concerns about apartments, but they didn't, I don't think they mentioned townhomes. So if, in fact, the intent is for townhomes, but we don't know who is developing it, it could be apartments. Is there a requirement between these two zoning types for a buffer?
No. Pulled up the zoning map. It'd be R10 to R10. It'd be the same zoning classification. And that conditional use for that neighborhood, Benamere behind it, allows for multiple types of building types, including condominiums, but not for rent apartments. So the scaling would still be allowed on both sides of the boundary line. Not that it's not fully developed. I'm just saying, based on their conditions, the uses aren't that different. So there'd be no need for a buffer. Sorry.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Haver, did that answer your question? Or you would like the applicant to consider adding a condition around buffering? Okay, and Commissioner Cochran, you agree with that? Commissioner Omakay had her hand up. Or is this related to that? Is yours related to this? Okay, Commissioner Omakay.
No, I was going to also say that I agree, and I was, I think this is a great project. And with there not being a developer protecting the residents that are behind the development by creating some sort of buffer and tree conservation on this side of the project. I know that if, I guess, if I lived there, I wouldn't mind something being built, but I wouldn't want to turn into a, you know, brick wall also. And the trees could also help with some of the sound, the noise pollution in the area from the traffic and everything.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
I just wanted to clarify, is the request from other commissioners to buffer an R10 neighborhood from an R10 neighborhood?
I'm not mentioning buffers. I'm just... If you can pull up the proposed versus the existing setbacks, the chart, right there. I'm only suggesting that the sum of the side yard be increased by five feet and that the rear yard be increased by some number between 20 and 30. I would prefer 30. So that's just existing so that the people who purchase those properties there can feel comfortable that they went into that purchase knowing what's going to be on the adjacent site. That's all. I'm not asking for any additional buffering.
But it touches, it's on the shared property line of an R10 to an R10, correct? Okay.
Can we pull up the map maybe so we can see the zoning?
What you're saying is the R10 is going to be the same, R10 to R10. If you were to develop that R10, it's 20 feet, and it's 20 feet on the north side. But if you look at those houses, they're right on the property line. I'm not sure how they did that, but I hear your point.
I often question buffering or providing additional screening from housing to housing.
I'm not screening, just setbacks.
Just setbacks.
Just setbacks is all. I'm not asking for any additional buffering or screening. Just if you look at how tight those parcels are to that site, again, if I purchased that knowing that the property adjacent to mine is an R1, knowing it could be rezoned, I get all that. But it's different if I purchased that site and it was R10 to R10. Then I think that's a different situation we're discussing. So all I'm asking for is just the setbacks that exist, no additional screening, no additional buffering.
And then I'll ask too, just to acknowledge, the side yard would be the rear yard of the parcels in question, right?
Not to, not to the northeast.
Perhaps.
If I may, real quick, also in this chart, we're looking at worst-case scenarios or the minimums, right? So even a detached home, it still would be 1010-520, which is what's allowed next door, 1010-520. So if you add in extra distance on these properties, is what I think is getting that, just added a developmental distance, not necessarily a screening buffer or something like that. It's, that's all it's doing is that, but we don't know the configuration. So you wouldn't be able to say side yard, rear yard is, I think, an issue in trying to make that determination of when this is, if this is crafted, making sure it meets all possible conditions. Because with that road coming through, you then change the orientation of where access is. There could be internal roads. There could be driveways off Lewis... We don't know, is the thing. So utilizing these setbacks for like-for-like would be a standard practice. But in crafting a condition, you need to, if that comes about, it needs to make sure that it doesn't just address side yard or rear yard because orientations may change. So that's something to be considered in this conversation. We can't just make a, you can't just sit here and say, let's make it 30 feet. Because I don't know if a side yard is going to be the side yard there.
We absolutely have done that on other cases. When it's adjacent to existing residential, we've added a condition just for certain property lines. So again, I don't want to get us down a rabbit hole. I think it's a great project. I'm willing to support it. I'm just asking that there be a little bit of consideration for the existing neighbors. Again, not knowing how it's going to be developed, not knowing who the developer is and not having a plan, I would just feel more comfortable. But we don't need to, we don't need to keep going down this rabbit hole if somebody wants to make a recommendation.
I saw lots of microphones being grabbed. Commissioner Otwell?
Thank you, Chair Bennett. Normally, when my fellow commissioners ask for additional conditions, especially around setbacks and transitions, and the applicant is willing, I'm happy to go along with it. In this case, I am uncomfortable putting extra cost and complexity and limitations on the church and their project. This is not a normal residential or commercial development that we're looking at. And I'd like to provide them as much flexibility as possible and would be happy to support it the way it is.
Other questions, comments? Commissioner Cochran?
Yeah, I wasn't requesting a condition, and I would like to acknowledge Commissioner Fox's point that it is an R10 to an R10, and in that case, I see no issue with the change.
Just like to say, I appreciate the architects at the table. Other questions or comments? I do, I have one comment, and, I mean, it's related to this, but it's more of a general comment. And I want to preface it by saying, as someone who always speaks vehemently about community engagement, I appreciate all the comments that we get from the public. I appreciate the, you know, people care about their communities. We do often receive comments when there's a potential for apartments about concerns related to criminality. When I was on the commission, way back when, I've been on... When I was on the commission, way back when, I've been on, we've been here for a while,
I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated September 9,
but we did have a committee meeting, and we had staff present data showing that there
2025, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment. This recommendation also includes an attachment to the future land use map to extend described
was not an increase in crime based on apartment status.
in the adopted consistency statement.
So I just want to say that. Thank you. I don't want to discourage people from providing their comments. Do I have a second? Commissioner Neptune has seconded it. I know there are perceptions, but I, I do want to make sure that we never judge people Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? based on the type of housing they live in and, and based on what was presented to us, That's unanimous. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, sorry, if I could.
Yes, sir. there was no correlation between crime and apartment dwellers.
Again, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I just want to, I just want to respond to Commissioner Otwell's cost about additional cost on the project.
So I just want to say that and put that on the record.
One, I don't know that there's going to be an additional cost to the church, they're
Any other questions or comments for Z1725?
selling it to a developer. And I think in, in, in sake of consistency, a lot of times when we talk about cost, it's
I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Fox. Oh, wait, I think Commissioner Burnett had said he was ready to do the motion.
about the perceived rich developer, and they should spend money versus a smaller local developer, let's not have them spend money. But for me, it's not about spending the money, it's about adding a small layer of protection to the adjacent residences, so.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Haver. Now let's discuss Z1825, Kyle Drive. Commissioner Omakay, you had a question about, clarification about the stormwater conditions?
Um, do I need to restate my question?
Nope, here comes Sally.
Sally Huiarali Stormwater. This, this case continued a condition referring to CR 7107, that was a stormwater requirement in the 1990s that was in effect until we adopted more stringent regulations in 2001, and we continue to have those more stringent regulations in place.
Does this neighborhood have any reports of, or behind, the neighborhood behind where we're talking about this, Z1825? Are there any reports of flooding? Has it been an area that has had, that has dealt with that?
We did find some far downstream reports of flooding. However, this, this site, and actually the combination of these sites, is less than 5% of the contributing drainage area. And per our code, if you're less than 5% of the contributing drainage area, you do not have to provide additional stormwater controls. If you're more than 5%, you do have to provide those. But in this case, that would not be a requirement.
Just one last question. Because this area is dense in trees, and of course, we know the trees help prevent flooding, with the removal of those trees, would that cause some sort of environmental impact?
So the, the change in land cover, including removal of trees, is something that gets considered in the stormwater calculations that are, that are in place to look at the change in runoff from existing conditions to the proposed conditions. So that, that factor is considered.
Considered, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Otwell?
Sure. With regard to Z1825, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated September 9, 2025, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment.
Second.
Commissioner Fox has seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. I'll note that Commissioner Burnett had stepped out. Does he count as an automatic yes? How does that work? That's a yes? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Those are all of our agenda items, so thank you. Thank you, Deacon Holloway, for coming and providing your input. Moving on to our other business, report of the chair. I just wanted to note that we will have a retreat coming up at some point this fall. I'll talk to staff about a date, but in the meantime, you all can think about topics that you might like to discuss and send them to me, and I'll talk to staff, and we'll get a nice agenda put together. Let's just go down the line.
Thank you. It looks like there are no pending items for Committee of the Whole, so we will not have a meeting on September 25. So again, no Cow meeting on the 25th.
Please bear with me while I look this up. We do have a text change committee coming up. It's in the report from the Assistant Director. Oh, maybe not.
While you're looking for that, we may have an item ready for September Cow. I would like to hold that time slot open, and we can make a decision at your next meeting about whether or not the Committee of the Whole, special Cow, I know, it sounds crazy.
What's the date on that?
September 25. The 25th. So we can, so we could do a, make a decision later.
Could I do a quorum check?
Sure.
Now?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So if everyone can just raise their hand if they believe at this moment in time that they would be available on September 25 at 4:00 PM. Looks, one, two, three, four.
Chair Bennett?
I will, oh, sorry.
Perhaps?
Commissioner Burnett, would you be available for a Committee of the Whole meeting on September?
25th.
25th at 4:00 PM. Okay, so that would give you.
And we still have Miller and Shelburne.
Would that give you six?
That gives us.
Raise your hands again if you can.
Raise your hands again.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Gives you five.
And we'll check with Miller and Shelburne.
I will follow up and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
So I, I found my document. Thank you. We do have a text change committee coming up. We have, we'll discuss TC 324, our HDC updates on September 17 at 4:00 PM. And I would like to go ahead and do a quorum check on that and see if anybody's going to be missing that meeting on September 17.
Who's on the committee?
All present. Good. You won't be there. I should have asked a more clear question. One absent? Two absent? All right, great.
Talk in your mic, Commissioner Omakay. No, in your mic, so we can hear you.
Um, is there, we have to be there in person. There's no opportunity, like, to zoom in, okay.
And no, no report for myself. Thank you.
Commissioner Neptune?
Thank you, Chair Bennett. Just first briefly, I wanted to acknowledge my thanks and gratitude to the, our colleagues on city staff with the Department of Transportation. We had a, last month, a very smooth transition from the Cardinal Dock Bike Program, a rental bike program in the city, to our Dockless Program with Lime and Spin Bikes. And this all happened in advance of the Hopscotch Music Festival, where we received thousands, tens of thousands of people here downtown and all around. And I certainly was one of many making use of our new Dockless Program. And I know it was a big lift for our colleagues on city staff at City Transportation, so I just wanted to acknowledge the work of Hannah Dos Santos and her team. Just one other note with regard to our earlier conversation with the rezoning case, Z1125, South New Hope Road. I wanted to thank Commissioner Omakay for flagging the issues around stormwater, flooding, and public engagement. You know, there was a comment made by my colleague, Commissioner Otwell, about, you know, regulations and how we should be, you know, by and large, I think, comfortable with that. I think there's certainly truth in that. But I would also acknowledge that, you know, sometimes it, it takes time for regulations to catch up to reality. And I think, especially in the context of climate change, you know, we've, we've been witness this summer, especially in the city of Raleigh, to some pretty torrential flooding. And, and I think there are, you know, reasonable concerns around that, especially with new development, and especially with regard to development that proposes potentially to be, you know, affordable housing, right, in the context of a floodway. That just, that's sort of like an added level of concern. And I, and I think it's worth acknowledging because this was an interesting case to me where seemingly it met the comp plan, it met the future land use map, but then as a commission, we have to consider the public interest and the public good. And whether it's in our backyard or whether we're considering really the city as a whole, you know, I just thought this was, again, a striking case worth flagging, you know, for our colleagues on, on council, and of course, stormwater management, the Advisory Commission. I was grateful to hear with regard to public engagement that there will be further opportunities for the public to participate despite what sounds like maybe insufficient public engagement leading up to this rezoning case landing at the commission table. So, and I'll just wrap up by saying, you know, there was a comment in our, I guess, engagement materials with regard to this case from a resident who attended both neighborhood meetings, and, you know, just stated that they felt the, the applicant, you know, sort of lacked a clear sort of presentation for these neighborhood meetings and felt rushed. Apparently, this, this resident, you know, actually reached out to the applicant and did not get a response. And, you know, I would just note for applicants present and future, you know, public engagement is not a box that we check. I think there are many members of this commission who take it quite seriously, and if you only see a handful of people showing up at your meetings, then I hope you feel encouraged to continue your engagement efforts and perhaps feel encouraged to get creative in how you're reaching people and where they are. Okay? So with that, I'll conclude my comment. Thank you.
Nothing to report.
No reports for me.
I want to do ditto what Commissioner Neptune said, and my report out does not have anything to do with planning, but the planning of my life, my student loans were forgiven, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's a big deal.
If I did have comment, I would not try to follow up on that, but I don't have any comments, so.
Okay, thank you all. We'll turn to the report of the Assistant Director.
I don't have anything to add other than what was published in the agenda. I hope you will read my report. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
I wanted to thank you for putting in the photos of everybody. That was really helpful for me and the bios. That was very helpful.
There's a lot of you new, there's a lot of us new. We need to get to know each other, right?
I appreciate it.
Should we do the same thing? No, I was being funny. Thank you, and thank you to, to staff. Again, we don't always thank you, but thank you for all the work you do to bring this information to us and make a lot of super-technical information make sense. So we appreciate you, we appreciate the applicants, we appreciate the public. I do want to say we do read emails, so just because someone's not here speaking, I want to acknowledge that we are reading the emails and trying to address those concerns that we see in our emails. So if there's nothing else, we will stand adjourned.